Mark Holmes in the middle of the table, is that it?
Doing the best we can.
Okay, we're doing the best we can, sounds good. Hey, welcome everybody, looking beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is Grand Forks City Council's Committee as a whole from Monday, April 10th. Item one called Order 1.1, welcome to the roll call.
Michael?
Here.
Solsky here. Weber?
Here.
Lunskey here.
Tommy?
Here.
Bean?
Here.
President Sandy?
Sandy here. Thank you. Item two, 2.1 Legislative Update, Mr. Bergstrom.
Thank you. Yeah, let's try this new setup, open to any feedback for the setup when the meeting's done. Open for that. From a legislative standpoint, not a lot different from last week. You're watching Senate Bill 2330, which involves the legacy infrastructure revolving loan fund. And we've had good conversations with our local representation. That isn't committee to be heard, was supposed to be heard today and they delayed that committee meeting, so it's now scheduled for tomorrow. We have heard from multiple people that they expect some form of amendments to that bill to fund the infrastructure revolving loan fund. We just haven't seen that yet. So I'm not sure what that's going to look like. And then we're also tracking the pension plan, House Bill 1040, got a due pass out of the Senate, and unfortunately, that is the one that is kills the pension, the pension portion of the N D first plan. But then that was re-referred to appropriations because there's a large dollar amount to, whether it's eliminate the plan or to revive it, that still is going to get worked out in appropriations. So we're still working on that one. Other than that, those are the two main bills we're tracking. There's obviously the large water bill, which has money for the Red River Valley water supply project that is actually moved in our favor as far as funding, funding that one more. But that one, the more funding we get in that one, the more we need that infrastructure revolving loan fund to have our local match. So other than that, Chairman Weber to the committee, or Assistant Administrator Phelan, if you have any other input regarding legislative matters for the past week?
We were going to make a push on those two bills. You know, I think those are the two bills that we really need to push on, so it's not over till it's over. And I think the other issue is Sharon's going to be, Sharon and Marine and Finance are going to be working on that snow removal fund that's been opened up now, and so they want to distribute those funds. So I think we have April to submit, and so we'll let you know on what our outcomes are regarding that. It was $20 million, I think $15 million for the first part of the winter, $5 million for the, you know, this last part of the winter. And anything that was left over for the first part of the winter goes to the second part of the winter. So it is, we'll let you know, I think probably relatively short are what are, what we think the revenue we should receive out of that $20 million.
Up note for that, for that snow removal grant, the state had in the bill, they want all those funds allocated by N D.
Can we meet with our partners at the county and university, et cetera, tomorrow morning to continue planning strategy for the rest of the session?
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Bergstrom, any questions for Mr. Bergstrom?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, item three, discussion items 3.1, Plans and Specs for Project A677 Town Square Fountain Reconstruction. Ms. Richards?
Thank you, President Sandy. As you mentioned, the project tonight is authorization to bid, or for WFW to bid on our behalf, on the reconstruction of the fountain at Town Square. You may recall last summer, significant repairs were made, and it looks terrific. DDA helped with some improvements, it also looked terrific, but our efforts to get that fountain working have just not been successful. So we did contract with WFW to take a look at it and design a permanent fix. That's what we're here to request moving forward tonight. I can say in very Rob Lehman's terms, they're going to basically take out the foundation and replace the pond basins and replace all the piping and controls that are associated with that fountain. You want a little bit more in-depth information on what that consists of? Mr. Williams can answer those questions. In terms of the funding source, we're looking at using funding in Fund 2163, which is our Economic Development Funds. We do have money that was what we've called EDA downtown funding. This was funding that was restricted by EDA. It was revenue that was generated by the corporate center when it was still under the mortgage by the EDA. Anything over and above the amount that was allocated to CDBG, this was based on the original funding breakdown, that CDBG funding and EDA and bonding were used to construct the corporate centers. So anyway, long story short, until EDA released the mortgage on, on the building in 2020, they had say over the revenue that was generated by it. The initial funding for our downtown action plan was from that EDA source. After the mortgage was satisfied, we went to EDA and said, okay, now what can we use the remainder of those funds for? And they agreed that downtown improvements, capital improvements, such as work on Town Square, the light pillars that will be put in on North Horse Street would be funded partially with this money. So that's the request tonight. Whatever, this with the next item, which is Christian Danielson will be talking about drainage repairs in Loon Park, that will pretty much exhaust the remainder of those EDA sequestered funds. And so for this project, based on the engineer's estimate of, well, the project budget is $500,000 all in, which is engineer's estimate plus contingency plus N E fees, we would look to that EDA funding plus any overage that is needed would come from our 2023 beautification program. That was a lot of words. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or you can bring Mr. Williams up to talk about the specifics of the actual engineering project.
I would like to hear more about specifically what, it's a lot of funds, what exactly is going to be done?
Thank you. The existing foundation for the paddle wheel, we found some structural deficiencies in it, and that is why we've had issues with it holding water. A lot of the water features are broken, and we believe that has to do with differential settlements in the foundation, because part of it goes all the way to below frost, part of it does not, and the pipes are broken, so water features don't work. We can't get access to fix those pipes because they're buried in the ground. The new foundation would allow us maintenance to get to those pipes if they, if we ever had issues in the future. It also has issues with moisture in there, so none of the pumps are salvageable. Electrical items are showing severe signs of corrosion, so those all need to be replaced too. The paddle wheel itself is salvageable, as are the water features attached to the paddle wheel, so that'll be taken out and then the whole foundation replaced.
Slensky, questions?
So will the, will the actual paddle wheel be rebuilt? Is that what the structure for $150,000 is?
The structure is the foundation. The $150,000 is the concrete foundation below the paddle wheel. There's a vault below the paddle wheel that you can walk into, access all the pumps and the water filtration, the water treatment. And then there's, there's actually two pumps, one to deal with the water features itself, and then one to deal with the recirculation of the water, to keep algae from growing in there and keep the water looking clean.
And so will it look exactly the same?
It'll look the same, but it'll work.
Bean?
For maybe Mr. Phelan, you know, a few years back, especially when we were looking at Merz Avenue, we were looking at revisioning all of that location, and should it even remain what it is, or should it be enhanced or whatever? Now we're doing some patch repair. Is that the long-term purposing that we're looking for Town and Square? Because at one time, we were going to expand it and enhance it.
I think Councilmember Bean, I think that was the original thought, and then Beacon by Epic came along and provided, you know, one of the concerns about redoing totally the Town Square, and it was like a $5 million, also call it $5 to $7 million to redo the whole thing, is it's still the same square footage generally. And so along came Beacon by Epic, and that provided us, you know, a larger venue that people really wanted. And so I think the larger venue piece of that went away with Beacon by Epic. Working with the Downtown Development Association over there in the back, there still is a, there, there is a suggested need that the Town Square needs to stay there. They have made some improvements, we got a Lowe's grant to do some things, and that specifically the water wheel is like an iconic piece of the downtown in Grand Forks, so we really need to make, get that functioning as part of a larger view. I know the DDA and their partners still would like to have that as a complimentary facility to the larger concert venue that we're going to have with Beacon. And really, this, this, this water wheel is a really important feature. I did ask is, because I think when the city originally built this back in the day, in late 90s after the flood, it was, I suggested this should be built so that it's a 30-year facility, you know, similar to what we build other waterworks type facilities. And so our waterworks operators can maintain this, similar to, you know, what we do with more critical infrastructure, whether it's waterways, water, stormwater, so that this is more of an engineering, engineered facilities that our, our crews in water can help maintain, and less of a, I call it an architectural. And so I think really what we're trying to do underground, underneath the beauty of the wheel, is to make it more of a waterwork where our, our folks can do this. I think it fits the mission of what we're trying to do, but I would call on Lou and, and the DDA maybe to talk about what they think the broader, I think their concern is when we cut the Beacon by Epic, is that we were going to forsake the Town Square or the Beacon, and they really think we should have an end strategy with the Town Square.
I think that's the biggest part, but I have no issues with the project itself. It's just I don't want to put it in now and in 10 years from now, five years from now, tear it up, and something that's more grander, as long as it's fitting into our strategic directions.
I think it, I think it's a strategic direction. I think this Town Square and the water will will stand for, for the next 50 years, I think is the intent.
I have a question. What are the new controls, the SCADA capabilities, so that you can get data off them?
That is along with what was being talked about, being, hooking it to the rest of the sewer system, water system. So SCADA is what we use to communicate all of our lift stations to the water treatment plant, and this would allow that option also. That way, we can see if we have a pump failure, if we're having a leak, if something's broken, we'll get, we'll get acknowledgement right away. If the control system down below floods, we'll get notified right away. I was in there to, just today, and found out that the ventilation system is broken, it's tripping the circuit breaker. We would get notified right away when that's having an issue, so we wouldn't have to come later and find humidity is at 100% and something's leaking.
Trying to understand the additional cost that that's going to add to the project.
That isn't, this SCADA doesn't add the cost, it's part of the control panel for the water treatment. It's an option that's already on there. So it's just to be able to plug it into the rest of the system is that huge benefit, but it's a very minor cost because they made all the new control systems to be SCADA capable.
Weber, any thoughts or questions?
I think to Mr. Bean's point, we have done some work in Town Square. Last year, we did some, now we're doing some again. I, I, when I first read the staff report, I, similar to Mr. Bean's point, was thinking that we're starting to piecemeal projects in Town Square, and I was hoping that we could get to a point where we would actually do another master plan, or identify what we're, what we're going to do long-term, simply because, and Mr. Bean's 100% right, we don't want to, we don't want to invest a half million dollars if, at some point in the less than 50-year future, we're going to want to redo and take out the water feature. So I think if it's, if everyone at the table today is in agreement that no matter what we do in Town Square, that water feature is going to be part of whatever else gets done, then I think it's fine to move forward. But if people disagree with that, then we should talk about it right now.
Well, so I, when I saw this this morning, a half million dollars is a lot of money. So at first, I thought it's kind of over the top, but the water wheel is in our logo, the water wheel is in everything that Grand Forks puts out, maybe not everything, it's in a lot of our marketing materials. The state of North Dakota uses it. So it is something we're very proud of, it's something that's a little bit different for our downtown. But I agree too, if, I know Kim Greendahl has, has been meeting with people too about revamping Town Square. I would like to know, is that a three-year plan, is it 10 years, does it include the water wheel?
When we engaged the consultant that did the downtown action plan, and that's coming up on six years ago, I guess, as Mr. Phelan stated, there was a desire to do some substantial changes. Despite those substantial changes, the water wheel was always still a key element of it. And with Beacon by Epic coming along, some of those major changes that pushed that five-year price tag up in the $7 million mark really aren't needed because we, as Todd said, we will have a pretty extensive venue kind of at the other side of downtown. So I think the efforts that have been made the past year, this, and then just kind of better ongoing maintenance will make sure that Town Square functions as it's intended, which is that still an iconic venue, but a smaller venue that will continue to operate kind of as it has for smaller events, family style events, farmer's market. But the longevity is there, it's just that desire to radically change its use has kind of gone away with the Beacon by Epic coming into the picture.
Mr. Kavami, do you have comments or questions?
You know, I would just echo what's already said, it's a lot of money. I don't know that I'm willing to support walking away from it, but I also don't know that I'm compelled to keep it. So if it's a, you know, it's a piece of our identity right now, you know, I'm fine supporting it, but, you know, if there's a, there's any ideas on what's, you know, the water wheel 2.0, or what's, what's the thing that we want to have in 10 years? If it's not the water wheel, then we should hit pause, but if everybody else agrees that it should still be, then that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Kavami.
The price tag was shockingly large, but that's kind of how price tags are these days. The good news is, we do have the funding set aside for this. So while it wasn't necessarily planned that we would spend a half a million dollars on this element, we do have the funding for it. And I think the mayor has expressed again and again his concern that if we have this fountain, why isn't it working? And this will give us that.
Any other thoughts or comments? Mr. Bean?
Well, I think I'm ready to make a motion. I, I understand what you guys have talked about with the Beacon by, I mean, that's probably going to be our main focal point downtown, but this does fit into the overall long-term plan. My question was, we're not going to replace it in five years, it doesn't sound like we have any intention of doing that. So I think we, it probably is, we probably need to get it done and over with, so I'm going to make the motion to approve the order.
Move by Bean, second by Osowski. Any other comments? Bearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. Which carries unanimously, 3.2 plans and specs for Project A677 Loon Park improvement. Mr. Danielson?
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. Like Meredith alluded to, this project is coming out of the same mental process as the previous one. This is meant to be improvements for the Loon Park, and for those of you who aren't familiar with what Loon Park is, over by Ellie's Ivy here, on, down there, South Third Street, there's a little pocket park right next door, they have a little bit of seating out there, it's got the really nice ivy growing on the walls. So that is Loon Park. It was developed following the flood of 97, and like I said, it's used for some outdoor seating for Ellie's Ivy, it's a little walking path that connects the alley behind the buildings to Third Street, so it's kind of a little cut through for people walking through downtown. As I understand it, there's been events that get held out there, we do let special events use the park for weddings or gatherings or downtown street, where I believe utilized it to some extent as well. This project's focus is meant to address the drainage problems that have come up in the park. Over the years, it's been in place for about 20 years now. The pavers that make up that, the walking pathways in the park have settled out and created low spots within the park. It was originally meant to drain from the center, out to the alley, and then to the sidewalks, but that is now somewhat falling apart as far as drainage goes. So the intention of this project was to address the drainage in the park. And the way that we're looking to accomplish that is to install an area drain right in the center of the park that would then connect out to the storm sewer in the street. So now, rather than all the water flowing just center of park to the streets, it flows more or less to the center of the park, is collected there, and then run through a pipe underneath the park, out to the street on, or South Third Street. And because we're cutting in, we would have to cut in a pipe to do that, it would also involve relaying all the pavers in the park. They're already in pretty rough shape, and even if we add this area drain and leave the existing pavers, there's still a bunch of low spots scattered throughout the park that are going to hold water when it rains. So the intention was to relay all the pavers, regrade the entire park so that everything goes right to that area drain or out to the street rally. This one, as I understand, Meredith, please correct me if I'm wrong, would be funded exactly the same as the previous project. Our current estimate for this is $180,000, plus or minus a little bit for contingency, and depending on how those bids come back. We're looking to bid this here coming up in the future, so right now, engineering's role was to prepare the plans and specs for the project, and then we would also see it through for bidding and construction, but I've had the pleasure of working with Meredith and her team to figure out all these minute details on the project. So we are looking for approval of plans and specs, and then any necessary budget amendments, and then direction for us to bid the project.
Thank you. Ms. Lunskey, yes?
Is landscaping included in here? Because I know there's quite a lot of bushes and...
So right now, the, the current plan for landscaping is to, in the park, I would guess, I would classify it as you've got fully established trees, and then some lower kind of ground bushes. The plan is to take the bushes out of the park. As we understand it today, they're kind of a maintenance issue, and just the activity that those kind of promote is undesired by the folks at Public Works that are trying to keep the park clean and are welcoming to all those who want to use it. So the intention would be to take out those ground bushes and then replace it with just grass. So it would be more of fully established trees and then grass where there's currently bushes on the ground. And the pavers would more or less be laid out exactly how they are today.
You mentioned the, yeah, other questions? You've mentioned the ivy earlier.
Yep.
Is it a bit of a, a maintenance problem as well?
Not much, I haven't heard quite so much of, but I know that that's a desired feature of the park. I know a lot of people really appreciate the ivy in that park, I know it gets used a lot for pictures when people go in the park, so I think there is a desire to keep the ivy, and as far as maintenance goes, I haven't heard that there's too many issues, but that's just me not hearing it, I can confirm.
Move by Weber, is there a second? Second by Lunskey. Mr. Kavami, comment?
Second, it was fine.
Thank you. Any other comments? Bearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close, same sign. Which carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
3.3 Sidewalk List for Project A614, 2023 City Sidewalks. Mr. Krinkop?
Good evening, President Sandy, and members of the committee. The item you have before you is our sidewalk list, sorry, first sidewalk list for 2023. The city ordinances that we have in place does require property owners for new builds to, after they have pulled their building from, to build their home, they have nine months to install sidewalk. In the case that they don't, we have ordinances in place that says that the city can end up installing sidewalks for them and special assessing them. There's also language in city ordinances as well regarding maintenance of sidewalks. The list that you have before you is nine new sidewalks, number nine new properties, and then two repairs. Staff is recommending approval of the sidewalk location is number one.
Any questions for Mr. Krinkop?
So when someone buys a lot, they have to put in their own sidewalks?
During construction, they are, after the home is constructed, they do need to either install their own sidewalk in front of their home, or the city can end up installing it for them, and then special assess the property.
That's why the homeowners are responsible for their sidewalks all across town, so if you're a homeowner, it's in your best interest to try to take care of your sidewalk in front of your property, because if it becomes in disarray, you have to pay to fix it. Any other, any other comments?
Move approval?
Move by Weigl, is there a second? Second by Osowski. Bearing no other comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close, same sign. Which carries unanimously, thank you. Item 3.4, Project Engineering Agreement for Project A656 Belmont and Fifth Avenue Intersection Improvement. Mr. Krinkop?
Thank you. This project is funded through the urban grant program. It's a federal-funded program that is 80% federal funds, 20% local. We ended up receiving a one, approximately a $1.3 million grant for this project. And right now, we are looking at this as the intersection of Belmont and Fifth, likely looking at Roundabout for this intersection improvement. Design Engineering Services, we ended up advertising, we ended up receiving six proposals. The most qualified was Bolton and Menk, and the Design Engineering Services is a not-to-exceed amount of proxy of $344,000. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the engineering agreement, Bolton and Menk, for the Design Engineering Services, and approving any necessary budget amendments. And I should also mention that the city share on that $344,000 is just under $70,000.
Mr. Krinkop, questions or comments?
Move approval?
Second by Kavami, any other comments? Yes, Mr. Weber?
The South Fifth Street comes into there, adding to the confusion, as they're doing their public input, public gathering, could we ask them to also consider closing that street to through traffic, or is there an engineering, engineering reason why that should not be done?
Closing which street?
South Fifth Street comes...
As it continues to the south there, that's definitely something that we can discuss through the design process. Since this is through the, using funding, federal funding, we have to go through an environmental process, which includes gathering public input as well.
Great, thanks. Any other comments, questions? Bearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Which carries unanimously, item 3.5 Preliminary Engineering Reimbursement Agreement, Project A653 Reconstruction, North Washington, First Avenue North, Eighth Avenue North. Mr. Krinkop?
Thank you, President Sandy. This project is reconstruction of North Washington from First Avenue North to Eighth Avenue North. This is a continuation of the project that is currently being worked on by the DOT, which is Washington from Demers to First Avenue through that underpass. This is kind of the first step, is getting that preliminary engineering reimbursement agreement signed with the DOT. This is an agreement that pretty much says that if we end up canceling the project, or if we substantially change the project itself, essentially canceling the project, that the DOT would be reimbursed by the city for the engineering costs associated with it. Overall, state has already advertised for engineering services on this one, they received six proposals. Houston Engineering was selected as the most qualified engineering firm. Local share on this is going to end up being 10%. And with that, staff is recommending approving the preliminary engineering reimbursement agreement and any necessary budget amendment for the project.
Questions, comments, Mr. Weber?
This is only for the roadway, this is not for the other bridge, the underpass.
Correct, this is only for the roadway on North Washington from First to Eighth.
Mr. Phelan?
Mr. Krinkop, could you give an update us on the previous project that I think that'll happen next construction season? The underpass, the underpass. Maybe describe what's going to happen there and kind of what the timeline is.
Certainly. Right now, for the underpass project, the project that is North Washington Street from Demers to First Avenue North, which includes some bridge rehab, some rehabilitation of retaining walls, that project, I believe, has been pushed out to the October middate. They're, they're still working the NSF Railway on cross participation agreements, maintenance agreements, those are things that the DOT is still working on, we're looking at an October bid opening for that one, which would lead into a 2024, 2025 construction season.
And Mr. Krinkop, then what would the timeline on this construction project, this would follow back, correct? Mister Crankup, then what with the timeline on this construction project, this would follow back, correct?
This would follow back in twenty twenty six.
Great. Other questions or comments? Your game moves approvals, there are second by Osowski, thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close same sign. Which carries unanimously. Thank you. Item three point six cost participation agreement with Community Foundation for Project eighty six forty five. University Avenue Street Lights. Mister Crankup.
Thank you, President Sandy. Um, while back, uh, Community Foundation ended up working with the University Park Neighborhood. Working with that neighborhood to try to find some ways to improve the neighborhood. Uh, one of the high priority items that came up during those discussions was safety. And in those discussions, the addition of street lighting on University Avenue, which currently doesn't really exist on University between railroad tracks. And uh, South Twentieth Street, that came up as a discussion point of a possible project. During those discussions with the residents in those neighborhoods, uh, was determined that. They weren't really fond of the idea of special assessments that were associated with that project. University Avenue is a classified street, so normally a street lighting project would be eighty percent. City funded, twenty percent special assessed. Uh, the Community Foundation stepped forward and they said, you know what? Uh, we'll cover that twenty percent that would otherwise be special assessed. And this agreement is uh. Taking care of the illegal agreement for them to handle that uh, twenty percent to a not exceed amount of thirty seven thousand five hundred. Which is based on twenty percent of the bids that are in the following items.
Mister Crankup, can can we technically approve three point six and not three point seven? Were they bid all as one project?
They were bid as one project.
So we either accept, we either approve both three point six and three point seven, or we have to reject both three point six and three point seven.
I believe that would be the case. Would you like me to go into discussing?
Talk about three point seven as well.
Certainly.
Uh, bid work, Project eighty six forty four and forty five. South Forest Street Lights, Kitson to Gertrude and University Avenue Street Lights, Railroad Tracks to North Twentieth Street.
Alright, so this is two different projects that were bid together. Project that we previously discussed as well as a maintenance project or a reconstruction project of our street lighting on South Forest Street from Kitson to Gertrude. Um, we do not know when uh, these streetlights were installed, but what we do know is that. The uh, poles themselves are heavily rusted and the underground wiring for the vast majority of those poles is not operable. Uh, the vast majority of these lights are actually run overhead to provide power. And this project is to remove the existing lights, install new lights, install new underground conduit and conductors. This project or these projects were bid out on April sixth and we received only one bid. Um, the low bid was, the total of the low bid was four hundred and nine thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and it was from STRATA. Uh, and it was approximately thirty five percent over the engineer's estimate. Now, one of the things that I will throw out there for this is um, the contractor who is historically good on these projects. Uh, did not pull plans on this, um, hasn't actually, from what I understand, pulled plans on any of our other projects as well. And so, uh, we tried contacting that contractor to see some details. We haven't been able to get hold of them. The bid prices that STRATA provided are very similar to the bid prices that they provided last year. So staff is fairly comfortable in awarding this or recommending awarding this to STRATA, even though it is thirty five percent over the engineer's estimate.
Thank you, Mister Crankup. Any other, anyone with comments or questions? Mister Mister Crankup, how? What's the urgency of uh, accepting a bid today versus rejecting this bid and rebidding? The whole project at some point in the future?
Um, from what I understand, the Community Foundation, they've uh, they've got a certain amount of funding that they're willing to put forward. That funding I believe was supposed to be allocated. In twenty twenty two, uh, we've already kind of pushed that with our bidding here. Uh, so there is a little bit of a concern as to how far can we push that? Uh, if we end up pushing it to a later bid date, we rebid it, say we were gonna rebid it this fall for twenty twenty four construction. I don't know how well that would work. Uh, that's something we could definitely give them a call and and talk with them about. Um, but I don't know if you're going to see substantially different bid prices between bidding now and bidding in the future. If uh, if the previous contractor who's bid on these projects in the past uh, and provided those lower prices, um, may or may not bid in the future.
Mister V. Sandy, I mean, it's kind of like, I'm not for sure. Six and one half does with the other hundred, hundred do this one. We don't know what the future bids are going to be. We do know we have that money to cover the special assessments now. Which leads me to believe that and that the numbers I heard you say were. Similar to what we had last year, that if I don't think.
So this contractor was thirty five percent over engineer's estimate last year as well. So. I I like the path you're going down. I also do think that perhaps Mister Crankup, we should reach out. Um, I I would be okay if somebody wants to move in second to move this on to next week and hopefully we can get some information in the meantime.
And I'll I'll do that, cause that was kind of where I was leaning to, cause at least we would have a week's time here.
That's very good. That's a great motion. Is there a second? Second by Osowski and then Mister Crankup, if you could speak with them. Thirty five percent over, although it's really nice that the Community Foundation is coming in. Again, we don't know. But there, we have a lot of wiggle room on thirty five percent over. For consideration for future bid. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Which carries unanimously. Thank you.
If I could also make a general announcement as well. On Wednesday this week, we are having a Shady Ridge Flood Fight Meeting. It is on Wednesday from five thirty to six thirty. That is being held at Fire Station Number Five, which is located on Forty Seventh Avenue South. Just east of South Washington, over by the Icon Sports Arena. And that's uh, to discuss flood fighting over in the Shady Ridge area for the upcoming term.
Thank you, Mister Crankup.
Thank you.
People in Shady Ridge should take in that meeting. Item three point eight, North Dakota Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Funding for Project eighty two sixty five Vale Circle Storm Sewer Improvements. Um, Mr. Seabird.
Hi, good evening. Uh, good news. We finally received that uh, the funding that we've been waiting for from the federal and state uh, governments. Um, as I noted in the staff report, uh, we got ninety percent federal cost share at approximately seven point seven million. Three percent cost share from the state at approximately two hundred and fifty eight thousand and that leaves the remaining seven percent to us at about six hundred and two thousand. With the funding shared, the um, any additional project costs that come along will be on us, the local share. Um, and currently staff is reviewing how to fund that city share, whether or not to special assess it. It's a large drainage area. So that it might not be worth it to special assess all those property owners. Just a brief history on this project. This project will include a new pump station one eighty six, upgrades to an existing pump station one eighty two. About a half mile of new storm sewer and new gravity storm sewer. This, the forest main will connect into the new, the existing forest main that was relocated as part of the old true hospital project. Upon approval, we'll go up and hire an engineer and hopefully have one hired by the end of May. And the goal would be to get this project bid this fall and then that would allow our contractor to start ordering parts and such. And then hit the ground running next spring. Um, FEMA did put a deadline on the project at twenty twenty five. But everything's being run through hazard mitigation, so there is some flexibility that way. Um, so staff is looking for authorization to accept the funding and sign the agreement with North Dakota Hazard Mitigation and then advertise for engineering services.
Um, yeah, Mister V.
First of all, I'd like to commend everybody. It took a lot of effort to get this done, because we didn't know if we're gonna get any funding for this whatsoever. And so staff and administration did a great job, I think, of trying to get this level of funding. So. For me, it's it's a no brainer and as you look at these maps and you see the areas that had. Had flooding and having been out there and visited those people, it was pretty astounding what they went through. So I'd make the motion to approve.
Second. Move by V and second by Weber.
Can I ask, uh, who who was the lead on the grant application?
Uh, so Mark Walker started it and I took it over and I started it right when I started it and it's been about a two year process. So initially we went through the FEMA Brick Grant Program and that was a seventy five, twenty five percent cost share. And now they upped it to ninety percent and it's basically ninety three percent and we're only on the hook for seven percent.
So again, congratulations and thanks. It's a great deal for the people that do it. Yes, Mister Phil.
Carmen, there was another grant you were successful on too, that you worked with Melanie and maybe in a similar program, wasn't it? Highlight what would you and Melanie worked on that one too?
That's the North End Relievers. That's the one that's going on the north end of town from. Lift Station Five and taking all that stuff. And we did receive um, the preliminary, the engineering services. And we plan to go through that same process for the actual construction, cause that's about ten million dollars. So that'll be similar cost shares, but I've been working with hazard mitigation and they said they'd be interested in this project for funding. It's just a long cumbersome process, but as long as you have patience, it pays off.
Occasionally hear complaints about city stock. I just don't understand it, because we have fantastic city stock, doing great work. Thanks.
So uh. This is really great. It's really awesome. We've been talking about this and we've had a lot of people from the Vale Circle area come to our meetings. And uh, yeah, they have really hard time. So hopefully, uh, we can move this forward relatively quickly. Will, when will we see this again? I mean, other than we're gonna prove it next Monday night, at what point will we see it coming back to us?
Once we hire an engineer, that'll come like the end of May. I am hoping to get that out and to get those hired like the first week of May, we'll do interviews. And then we'll come back to get that engineering services.
When can we know more about what on the special assessment side? What what the special assessment district would be?
And that's a lot of work of finance on. Originally, when we brought this project forward, the town hall association said that they would donate the land if we didn't special assess them. So we actually do have an appraisal of that parcel and it was about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. If they donated the land we needed rather than special assessing it. Originally, when we looked at this, there was a three tier approach of of the areas that we could special assess. And the biggest area was almost a two mile radius. And finance told us that it's not really, I mean, it's very challenging to get that many people. You know, it goes all the way down to Twenty Eighth Avenue, so they're not gonna see benefit down there for a new pump station, but.
Cause if you look at this, you see where water is backing up into these areas, not just draining away is what it looks like if you compare the two maps.
Yeah.
That um, so everybody benefits even though you don't have it in front of your house.
Exactly. But trying to explain that to people is gonna be rather difficult.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close same sign. Which carries unanimously. Thank you. Three point nine professional service agreement authorization number forty four, Project eighty six ninety eight. Municipal solid waste landfill vertical expansion and contaminated soil treatment pad. Mister Lips.
Good evening, President Sandy and committee members. Um, this, the um, service, professional service agreement for you is for the vertical expansion. Of the municipal solid waste landfill. And it takes a major permit modification to make this possible. And in my staff report, I kind of lay out um, what the cost is for cell construction. And so the latest cell which we are just wrapping up construction on is Cell C and that cost was probably seven million dollars. And so when you equate um, the cubic yards and to this cost for this vertical expansion. It brings the cost down to. Dollar seven per cubic yard versus nine dollars per cubic yard. And as part of this project, we did have preliminary discussions with the DEQ. And they would like us to also look at having a contaminated soil treatment pad at the MSW landfill. That's where all of the contaminated soil is currently going. And you know, they don't really love that that takes up space in the municipal solid waste landfill. They would much rather us treat that, work that and then be able to use that as potential cover in the future for the landfill. So, um, with that, I'm asking. You to approve the authorization forty four to Berns and McDonald for Project eighty six ninety eight. Um, and all associated budget amendments and upon final review and approval of finance and the city attorney.
Any questions, Mister Weber?
My apologies, I should have checked in earlier today. How much contaminated soil do we have in our community and what are the main sources?
The most recent project we worked on was the Franklin on Fourth project, which was across the street. And we reached an agreement with that and I want to say it was about seventy five hundred. Ton of material that the landfill took, some contaminated, some uncontaminated. And so there's the trend upward of the contaminated soil that we are seeing and. We're one of the very few landfills in this area that are actually able to. Accept it.
And how long does it take us to treat it before it can be used for cover?
It depends. Um.
Contamination.
It depends on the level of contamination and how long it takes to work that out, air it out.
Across the street here, we had uh, gas stations and auto dealers. So that that's the kind of contamination source that we were dealing with there.
Correct. And we're limited on the quantity of contaminated soil we can take at the MSW landfill. And so when you um, when you take all your potential waste as contaminated soil. Then that limits all the other waste you're able to accept, like special waste, like asbestos and things like that. So. It handcuffs in what we can take in the future as well.
Move by Weber, is there a second? Second by V. One quick question. There is some discussion in the staff report about some of the other regional municipalities wanting to bring. Soil as well. And other refusals. Are we charging enough? Are we charging enough for non? Grand Forks folks?
We are doing a cost to service, um, which should hopefully be completed by budget time this year so we can have those numbers available. Um, you know, we're one of the main regional MSW landfills and so I think, you know, um, some of the contractors. In the city of Grand Forks are getting additional contracts from some of these outside smaller cities and so that's why we're. We're seeing some of those places come to.
So.
Grand Forks. The 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 one you may be talking about is Becker County in particular. They were looking at us because Fargo is reaching capacity and so it's something that could potentially happen in the future.
Just. We, I, when I first got on the council, we were talking about the. The landfill as a ninety to a hundred year landfill and now in the staff report, it says eighty to ninety years. I I just, I would hate to uh, us jeopardize the duration that we get to use our landfill by helping Becker County, nothing personal of Becker County. At all. And uh, if we have room, great, but uh, um, that landfill needs to be here long after I'm gone. Yeah, for our for our community, because we all know, well, many, many of us know how difficult it was to get the landfill in the first place. So uh, and there are still people in our community that are unhappy about the landfill. It's our current location.
And President Sandy, this vertical expansion is only gonna extend out like.
Which is great. Any other comments?
There's somebody sitting at this table that had a lot to do with the location of that.
It's all your fault.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mister Lips. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close same sign. Which carries unanimously. Thank you. Three ten professional service agreement authorization. Project forty five, Project number eighty six ninety nine inert landfill vertical expansion.
This one, this um, professional service agreement is much like the last one we just discussed. It is um, for the inert landfill and the inert landfill is currently going to reach capacity in the next. Seven or so years. And so, um, Berns and McDonald recently. Completed a survey of that landfill and. Are recommending that we work on a vertical expansion permit modification for this landfill as well. And we are hoping that we can. Spread out or lengthen the the life of that landfill up to twenty thirty by doing this vertical expansion.
Mister Weber?
Yeah. Showing my my technical ignorance about about these matters. Vertical expansion means down. Yes.
Means up.
Up. Vertical up and then we would keep it some of the holes in the landfill.
Okay, okay. Um, which answers my next question. So, thanks.
Any other move by Weber, is there a second? Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor. Very none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign, which carries unanimously. Thank you. Item three-eleven, assignment of landfill farm lease and assumption of obligations, Sean Montgomery, Lipsch.
The current land surrounding the landfill is currently being leased out and one of the leases is James Mulligan and he is going to be retiring. So he has requested that his lease be granted or changed to Sean Montgomery. And so I worked with Mr. Gostad to, or will work with Mr. Gostad to make those changes to this current lease.
So, Ms. Lipsch, they're currently, they're on the hook for, you know, Mr. Mulligan's on the hook for the lease, the current lease, regardless of whether we signed it or not. I'm not saying we shouldn't sign it. It does seem, I don't, I have no idea what a land lease per acre would be going for in that area. Thirty dollars an acre sounds really inexpensive to me, but I also know the soil up there isn't the greatest either. So do we know, when was the last time we looked at what other land was leasing for in that immediate area? Any idea?
I looked back in the records and I was not able to find anything on these leases even coming to council.
I think it's been similar since the landfill was created in back in late two thousands, I suspect. I suspect.
Sure.
I think at the same time, we could look at assigning it and maybe looking at a price per acre.
I think we should, I think somebody should, should ask some questions and see what other, I don't know if the other farmers in the area would be willing to share with us what they're getting per acre or what they're paying per acre. But I certainly think that we owe it to the community to ask the question.
I think most of this though is really, you know, no clue. I don't think you can even raise anything on this, much less.
The company's paying thirty dollars an acre today, right? They've been paying thirty dollars an acre, so there has to be some value there. I, I agree with you. It is all out on miserable soil, but I don't know.
Currently, this property is hayland and so Mr. Mulligan pays it and feeds it to his cows. But this lease is up in twenty twenty-three, so we could definitely look at that for the start, working on that lease for twenty twenty.
So you could assign it now and then you're still going to rebid it in
Right.
Or whatever, right?
Yep.
I think I'll make that motion.
Motion by, second by Osowski. Any other comments? Very none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those same sign, which carries unanimously. Thank you so much, Ms. Lipsch. Three twelve, Grand Forks Operations, surplus equipment.
President Sandy, so before you, I have the sanitation division has surplus items listed on the staff report and the street division has one item listed on staff report. We plan to use GovDeals again to surplus that equipment.
Any questions about the list, removed by Weber, second by Osowski? Any other comments? Very none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those same sign, which carries unanimously. Item three thirteen, payment of the little taxes request from Enclave Companies, Mr. Phil.
President Sandy, members of the community, I'm going to team up with Mr. Brooks. We, we get to work on these kinds of things and also we have Michaela Hewitt from Baker Tilly online and also Mr. Lancaster and Mr. Morris, I think, are online for Enclave. We thought we'd give you an update on, on kind of what we're doing right now and maybe the next slide, Cheryl. And so you can see the yellow mark marks the area that the subject matter property. And so to the, to the east is Revolutions and Ironhide and then to the north is the truck stop and that's where, so that's kind of where we're looking at here is this is what we call the I twenty-nine south area. And then if you look at the next slide, you can see in this area when, this is one of, Mr. Beating, recall when we were looking at trying to create strategic infrastructure growth areas. This is one of the areas that we put in early in infrastructure. We use the Bank and Earth quota loan program as part of that. So what we've done over the years, as you can see, to the west is the stormwater pond that we've expanded for this area. That's inset here and also further to the south, we can further expand. We also put in a interim wastewater pump station that's adjacent or near that stormwater pond services area. So we were trying to create an area in this part of the area that would help us move forward sooner rather than later when developers want to come in and develop property. So it kind of fit our mission as, as we move forward. And then the next slide are some similar areas. Here's what we're talking about. We're talking about a hundred thousand square foot plus or minus building, twelve to thirteen million dollar investment. And what the developer is looking at is three to four unit of, as an industrial facility in advance of a prospective invest, investment opportunity here in Grand Forks. Next slide. This is a similar area. It's hard to depict this one, but this is the TK Development that Coast Materials is working on. So to the north of this map is Demers Avenue and then essentially Coast and true north have taken over this property. And then you can see all the various lots that are smaller lots. These are lots that are intended by the developer to, to sell off and generally build twenty, twenty to thirty to forty thousand square foot buildings. One of the requests of TK Industrial Park is is there any way that we could set up a tax incentive area or district so when people come in and they start selling out these lots that they could do that in advance and working with Mr. Gostad, which you have to bring them in one at a time. And so we were looking at trying to set up something that we're talking about right now with the Enclave companies. And so I can see this is another area that you're going to, we're going to receive similar requests. The street needs to go in this construction season and then all this infrastructure will be available. When I've had conversations with Coast Materials, which, which is a great addition to the Grand Forks community, there's a lot of, there's significant interest in this area for further investment in Grand Forks. So I think you, you'll see further investments in this area. And then another area we wanted to highlight is the next slide, Cheryl, which is the business park. And this is a park where most recently we did sell a lot to Northridge for a similar warehouse facility too. They purchased the land. They have not come back to us for the development plan at this point in times. And then finally, the next slide would be the Simonsons have brought forward, as you recall, to build a logistics park. And so this would be north of Gateway Drive and Fifty-Fifth. And as you go up further Fifty-Fifth, you're going to, you're going to run into the landfill or adjacent to the landfill and then the Epidemie Energy site. So just pointing out, these are, these are a few areas above and beyond the I twenty-nine south area that I think we're going to see development from a, an industrial, commercial and logistics perspectives that we are making infrastructure ready. And I think one, the other discussion that we have is, okay, we have the land, it has the infrastructure. And the next question is what kind of tax incentives that can be applied to various businesses come? I think all, it's great to hear whether it's, you know, Guy Useldinger on the I twenty-nine south working with Enclave or whether it's TK Development, Coast Materials or Simonsons, all these various developers are working with other private sector, the groups that they work with to bring further development and investment into our community. So they're working that. And what we're trying to make it is seamless and as predictable as possible as, as they come into our community and want to grow and invest. The other thing that we've heard from all these companies is, is that when a company is looking at locating up and down the I twenty-nine corridor, whether it's Sioux Falls, Fargo or, or Grand Forks, the location matters, but what more so matters is that they're going to be, they can move forward sooner rather than later. So what we try to do in this case is try to be able to say in Grand Forks, working with the private sector, that we can move forward with projects, you know, post haste. And there's not a year-long gap because when, my understanding is when they come to town, they want to be able to move with their investment within months. And if you can move forward in months, they're going to look at all their alternative locations up and down the I twenty-nine. We all know that, you know, we're not at the, we're not at the crossroads of two interstates. Fortunately, we're at the crossroads of an interstate and a US highway, which is, which is good, but it's not as good as others to ourselves. And so we're trying to make ourselves as competitive as possible as we move forward. And so when we worked on this particular project with Enclave is, our thought is that we had the infrastructure available in there. How could we help facilitate the investment within reason without us expending additional city dollars above and beyond what we've already invested with infrastructure? And that's tax incentives. How do we promote private sector coming forward, taking a risk and building a building so that we are building ready to, not only infrastructure ready? And so that's our paradigm in this, what we want to do, not only with Enclave companies, but these other developers so that we can be more competitive in our, in our area with these companies. As part of this, Enclave companies, they, as all developers, they are asked for to start with a hundred percent in twenty years. And so that, that's always a starting point. We did ask Michaela Hewitt's online from Baker Tilly. That memorandum is attached to the staff report. She did review the pro forma and as part of that pro forma, that she can recommend a five-year hundred percent as part of that pro forma as we move forward. Enclave Companies was accepting of that and, and I think want to move forward with their development. So that's kind of where we're at with this. The other thing we tried to do in, in Council, President Sandy and I had had a conversation, you know, why do we get five years? Well, five years is kind, is what you do with our Renaissance Zone. Five years, we've done with other business park developments and five years keeps it within the city of Grand Forks forwarding. So anything beyond five years, we get the local government advisory committee together. We also have to go to the county and we have to go to the school district for their, you know, parallel approval and then we come back here. So it, it sets up a two-month process for us to go all through that. I would anticipate that we're going to go through that process with both Epidemie Energy and with Memorial Village too, that both projects that you've seen, we haven't done a final negotiation. Michaela Hewitt is looking at right now the Memorial Village project that had that associated U N D softball, competitive softball field. She's not quite done with that analysis. That'll go, I suspect, beyond five years. Epidemie Energy has asked for five years. And so this would be one where we can keep it within five years, which is inform our other local government taxing entities. So with that, if you have any questions, representatives of both Enclave Companies are available and also Ms. Hewitt can respond to any questions regarding her financial analysis I've looked forward. So I'd hand it back to you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Phil. Any thoughts or comments, Mr. Bean?
Yes, sir. For Mr. Phil, I mean, this is the private sector now. It is like us building an industrial park and having to sell the land. The private sector is coming in, buying up land and, and subdividing it and, and developing it for future use and benefits to the community, right?
That is correct. And, you know, one of the things, and I would think it was said earlier, you know, we're trying to divest ourselves of some of our buildings and land. It was, we still own, I think, Mr. Brooks said about forty acres, about fifty acres in the current business park. Our thought right now, and we're going to have more strategy sessions with the growth fund, but our thought is, well, is that good enough and we can just put a period on that and then have the private sector buy additional land and do all those things or things. So I think in this case, we've even, you know, we've been talking to Mr. Bean about should we buy a, or build a spec building and get this right? I think in the great case of this, private sector is going to build it, they're going to take the risk to fill it. We're just trying to facilitate that investment with, with not only the infrastructure, infrastructure that we've already done, but also the tax incentives.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking because it's going to have growth potential for the community with little impact to us. We're not getting any money off of that now. So it'll be five years from now, we will, we'll reap the benefit, right?
And we're even going to, right now, it's, it's in valued as egg land. And so when this development moves forward, the land does not get the tax incentive. And so if you look at what the value of the land right now, it's, you know, seven, eight hundred thousand. And so that land is already can get taxed because that does not get, only the building improvements get, get the pile of tax incentives in this case.
Other thoughts, comments? Mr. Phil, based upon the discussions that we've had with the other taxing entities in the past, specifically coming from the school board, they're interested on, on any sort of a project like this, they're interested in seeing funding, city collecting property taxes sooner than later. So regardless of my feeling of having to go grovel to the school board and the county commission, I, my thought is we should, I would prefer to see us do a ten-year fifty percent rather than a five-year hundred percent. It works out essentially to the same, give or take. It's probably a little bit more in their favor because of the increase in property value over time. So they might get a little more benefit, but at least we'd be collecting fifty percent of the property taxes right away so that we can start getting money to the other taxing entities and specifically to the school district that so desperately needs it. So I'll just throw that out for thought process. We, that would mean we would have to go to the county and get approval and we would have to go to the school district and get approval. And if they, if they disagree, we could always come back here and have the discussion again about a hundred, five years hundred percent if people want to see, see that move forward. It's just, it's going through my head.
What time is that picture?
Couple of months probably, right?
Because right now, the staff recommendation is just to set the public hearing essentially about a month from now to City Council meeting.
I would, I would take the initiative to call the school board president and the county commission, the chair of the county commission between now and next Monday and have a general discussion with them about what their thoughts are.
Well, I mean, we could approve this now as presented
Right.
With the idea that we could set directions in a week.
Certainly.
Maybe since we're online, I see Mr. Morris is on here for Enclave. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, Mr. Morris, just for the greater good of the city council.
Yeah, sorry, I couldn't be there in person. I will next time. The, the goal with this project, I'd speak just high level on it, is over the last, call it, five years of the industrial expansion cycle we've seen across the United States. We've seen a gap from a quantity of product and the type of product we're wanting to deliver to the marketplace in Grand Forks where other markets, including to the south of Grand Forks, Fargo, Sioux Falls, along I twenty-nine, both have had probably a few million square feet of industrial developed, Class A in nature, appropriate for national tenants and logistics, warehousing, manufacturing, et cetera. And the one challenge we found with developing a speculative building with no tenants in the Grand Forks marketplace is the tenant profile type, they search a wide, call it three hundred mile radius for their use. And they really pursue lowest cost, I would say lowest cost, easiest accessibility from an I twenty-nine, I ninety-four standpoint. And the challenge we've found with developing a project in Grand Forks that would meet the needs and not be, I should say, remain competitive within that marketplace is probably number one, cost difference, call it five to 10%. And with that cost difference and without some form of incentive, rent would be correspondingly different. So it's, it's, it sounds kind of funny, but we're really, when we look all along our projects from Grand Forks all the way to Sioux Falls, a tenant will choose a location over fifty cents a foot less expensive or, put a different way, maybe that's six or seven percent different than other options. So our goal is to try and figure out how to kick it off, kick off a speculative opportunity to bring jobs, manufacturing, warehousing, logistics, an opportunity to be really competitive in that space, or I should say competitive enough to attract tenants and drive more, drive additional volume of industrial in the Grand Forks marketplace. And we think this location is fantastic for that. The challenge to address Mr. Sandy's point of fifty percent over ten years versus a hundred percent over five, we can, we could kind of analyze that in the background after this meeting, after potential approval. But the biggest challenge to attract a speculative tenant is having it available. The second biggest challenge with an investment into a project of this magnitude is the time that you are speculative with no rent coming in, real estate taxes end up being the second largest expense to mortgage. So our goal was to have a period of time with the lowest soft So our goal was to have a period of time with the lowest soft cost, uh, call it expense over a three-year period, because usually they take two to three years to fully tenant. And then by the time we were fully tenanted, our real estate taxes turn on. Um, so that's kind of the premise behind it. And in working with Baker Tilly on it, uh, their suggestion, um, of having taxes uh, come on full bore by year six, um, was something we could wrap our arms around. So I'll kind of leave it there and I'm happy to answer any other questions. Um, over the last three or four years, we've developed, uh, roughly two and a half million square feet of industrial, um, most of which has been on a speculative basis. And, and I'd say now ninety percent of it is occupied with great tenants with, uh, uh, great employment basis, so.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
So is, is the question just to set the public hearing date? Is that all that you're asking right now? So we can still have this discussion as long as I go ahead and make the motion of setting the public hearing.
Second? Second by Osowski. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion carries unanimously, Adam Thor. Council member, discussion matters, things for discussion, Mr. Bean. Ms. Lunskey.
I'm sorry, I answered for heat, so I didn't keep asking.
Sometimes you get what you ask for. So Osowski. Mr. Weigel, anything online?
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Weber?
Nope.
Very good.
Thank you, is our motion to adjourn. By Osowski, second by Weber, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.